I hereby call to order the special meeting of the Palm Springs City Council for October 18th, 2018. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please place your hand over your heart and repeat with me, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you. You may be seated. A city clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Holsteg?
Present.
Councilmember Coors?
Present.
Councilmember Middleton?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Roberts?
I'm here.
Mayor Moon?
Here.
All councilmembers are present.
Thank you very much. Our first item is public comment for the unfinished business item on the agenda this evening, which is the draft maps for voting district boundaries. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council, only on this item. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. Currently, we have four people requested to speak. If anyone else wishes to speak, please put a card into the city clerk. The first speaker will be David Friedman, followed by Tony Aguilar, then Norm King, and then Don Barrett.
Mayor, before we begin public comment, if it's acceptable to you and to the council, I just want to remind the public what we're talking about tonight. These are agenda items and public comment on agenda items. We're talking about the maps. We're talking about the draft maps that are here. The working group will make a presentation on those maps. And we're not talking about the wide range of issues that the council will be considering through the course of its continued discussion and deliberation on compliance with the Voting Rights Act and the ultimate transition to the districts. So the maps are really the topic tonight and consideration of those issues related. Thank you, and I just wanted to make clear that that was the substance of the public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Calkin, and I'm glad he provided that reminder. We are just talking about the district boundary maps, the ones that have been provided here, and our goal tonight is to weed this down to a smaller number. So other items such as the number of districts, the way the mayors set up, etc., are not items for public comment tonight, just the maps. So if anyone has any comments on that, please save them for another city council meeting.
Question on point of order. Does this agenda, I guess I could look at it, include a public comment at the end?
No.
So we're just focused on maps tonight and maps alone?
Yeah, there's no general comment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Another point of order. The working group has done quite a bit of research on the maps, and we would like, as part of the subcommittee's report, to allow the working group to have a chance to present their report.
That'd be after public comments.
Right.
Okay, first speaker is David Friedman, then Tony Aguilar, then Norm King, Don Barrett. David Friedman, please.
I am part of the leadership team of Organized Neighborhoods of Palm Springs, and thus I'm very familiar with the functioning of One PS and its member neighborhoods. But for the record, I am speaking this evening in my individual capacity and not on behalf of One PS. I would like to thank council for its strong commitment to public input and carrying out the districting process. As part of that process, I submitted maps that reflect the U.S. Supreme Court's definition of community of interest and the goals in your statement of principles. Those goals include prioritizing creation of majority-minority districts and, to the extent practical, keeping organized neighborhoods intact. The five-district map I submitted creates a district whose population is majority-minority and keeps intact 44 of the 45 Palm Springs organized neighborhoods, whose boundaries have previously been approved by the city manager using criteria similar to the community of interest analysis. The five districts are each compact, since the Supreme Court has identified compactness as a traditional districting principle. A community of interest analysis for each district is included with my maps that are part of the record of your September 27 special meeting. Among the key features are dividing downtown, so two councilmembers share responsibility for this critical area for the city's economic development, and creating districts of neighborhoods that share common concerns, such as new developments, golf course conversions, as we heard last night, and airport noise. I urge you to include my map among those that you will select this evening. Among the other maps submitted, the NDC smoke trap, Smoke Tree map achieves many of the same objectives as mine, but I would ask you to consider the variants of that map submitted by Ms. Miller to bring the Lawrence Crossley neighborhood into District 1, and by Mr. Heinbaum to keep his Upper West Side neighborhood intact, as shown in the combined map submitted by the CVRA working group, which I just saw right before we began. I would also ask that boundary adjustments be made as much as possible to unify the other divided organized neighborhoods. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman. Now, the next speaker is Tony Aguilar, followed by Norm King, Don Barrett, and Bruce Hoban, and then Les Young. Anyone else wishes to speak, please put in a card to the city clerk at this time.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, city manager, staff, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Tony Aguilar. I'm a resident of Palm Springs for 33 years. Been active in the community, doing a number of things for this period of time. I am a retired submarine, nuclear terrain submarine officer, and we had a say in the submarine service. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. You folks are trying to do something here that is totally unnecessary, it's not warranted, it's against the law, and I want you to be on notice that a group of citizens are being put together to gather money to file a lawsuit, file an injunction against this action.
Mr. Aguilar, I'm sorry, I really appreciate your sentiments here, but as I mentioned a moment ago, and the district and the city attorney pointed out, by law, we can only discuss the subject tonight, which is the district boundaries. Unfortunately, the subject of the number of districts and how we're setting it up, that ship sailed a couple of weeks ago. So we're speaking about the maps tonight. However, at the next city council meeting, you are more than welcome to come to the city council meeting and speak during the general public comment.
I will do that. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Aguilar. Our next speaker is Norm King, followed by Don Barrett, then Bruce Hoban, then Les Young.
Greetings. I'm Norm King. The city council is using the Voting Rights Act to illegally overturn what the people have voted for because you disagree with what the voters enacted.
Mr. --
This has direct bearing on the choice of maps.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Mayor Pro Tim, I have this under control. I don't need to be advised, okay? Mr. King, again, as I told Mr. Aguilar, that ship sailed a couple of weeks ago, and tonight we're only discussing the maps that were provided as a part of the agenda. I certainly welcome, we certainly welcome your comments, but this is not the time and the place for it. And then our next regular meeting during the general comments section, they would be very welcome. But tonight we just --
My remarks have to do with the maps that are on the agenda tonight. It doesn't mean they also don't have to do with other maps. I have a right to speak to those maps. Don't I?
Mr. Mayor, it's certainly appropriate for Mr. King to make comment on the maps that are being considered tonight if he wishes to do so.
Certainly, certainly. I just wanted to --
I would also add, you were very correct in your statement about what's on the agenda tonight, but I would also add, for those in the community that want to make comment regarding some of the issues you listed, those opportunities will exist again. Not only did the ship sail in terms of consideration of the issue, but those issues will be considered again when the council considers what ordinance to adopt.
Correct. And as I said, at every city council meeting, we have an opportunity for people to speak on anything they'd like to speak to within the interest of the city council meeting, and they can do that at that time.
You're most correct.
Unfortunately, tonight, we have a very limited agenda, which is just the maps that were provided tonight for us to consider. Thank you, Mr. King. Okay, I guess continue.
So I can't mention the five maps?
Yeah.
The four maps that are before you tonight?
Go ahead. I --
Councilmember Holsteg has stated that the maps that you eliminated in order to get to the four maps tonight was the only option consistent with state law. This contradicts statements made by the city attorney in that four districts is a viable approach, quote, "and would have a reasonable likelihood of being confirmed." Last meeting, you considered eight maps. Tonight, you're considering four. If any of these maps were inconsistent with state law, the staff would have had the professional responsibility to tell you that. The city attorney has not told you they are inconsistent. He cannot tell you that they violate state law because he knows there is precedent in our true command. In our democracy, the city council cannot overturn a vote of the people unless it violates state law. It would have to make a finding then that only four districts, only five districts meet state law, which it clearly does not. Insofar as the Hispanic and minority populations, the differences among all eight maps, including the four before you tonight, are marginal and inconsequential. All of the maps, whether four or five districts comply with state law, only the four district directly elected mayor maps comply with Palm Springs law. You have claimed that five districts is more equitable because of greater concentration of Hispanic and minority total population and voting population. Your own data does not support this claim. If population data was your real motivation to have the four maps before you tonight, you would retain all of the four district maps, because all of the four district maps have the same or more Hispanic minority populations in District 1 than two of the four five-district maps. I have two requests. If you disagree publicly, state why you believe a directly elected mayor is a violation of state law, and publicly tell us upon what legal authority you have to overturn a vote of the people. Secondly, let the people decide. In order to conform to the timetable, adopt the four district option, and let the people choose between the two options in a future election. In summary, don't block the will of people based on your own personal preferences. You have very likely to disagree that four maps is better or five maps is better than four, but you do not have a right to violate a basic state law.
Thank you, Mr. King. Our next speaker is Don Barrett, then Bruce Hoban, and then Les Young. Mr. Young will be our last speaker unless anyone else turns in a card to speak.
Mayor Moon and council, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I had expected concerning this, the composition of today, that we're actually going to have a different type of meeting, so I did not come prepared with advanced remarks, but I can make them and make them fairly briefly. I'm speaking primarily about some of the criteria I used in coming up with the map. I have one of the maps. I thought that housing composition was a major factor in the city that would reflect the economic and cultural factors that are of concern about the direction of the city. That people from affordable housing, renters, would have more in common, and they needed more representation. So my mapping is designed as much as possible to reflect, to draw neighborhoods that have, not neighborhoods, districts, that have a commonality in terms of the composition of the housing. They have apartments, mobile home parks, small housing, just housing that's of a more affordable manner compared to the have more expensive housing. So I think that's a viable criteria for using and coming up with this. So that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Next speaker is Bruce Hoban, and then Les Young.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council. As we look at these maps, there are one common thing that concerns me on form I would like to point out. And that is they don't dissect downtown east to west, nor to all the much wealthier communities to the west of Palm Canyon. So what we are in essence doing is creating a district that is extremely wealthy, and the concern about that is those are very expensive elections. Right now, in the past eight years, elections have cost for city council in this town anywhere from $100,000 to $410,000. And I would hate to see us create and carve a district that looks like that. So as I, you know, ask you to look at this, the last three in your package, plus Smoke Tree, in other words, create this from Ramon all the way to Chino Vista, all of downtown, Movie Colony, and everything to the west. And I hope that can be a factor in our determining, understanding that we have to look at the demographics, but I hope we don't create what is really, could become a wealthy district with very expensive races. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoban. Next speaker, and our last speaker before we go to the agenda item, is Les Young.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, councilmembers, staff. I think there are some wonderful maps that citizens have worked on and that the committee has worked on. The one thing that I would ask is a few of the maps do separate neighborhoods or neighborhoods which are HOAs. The neighborhood in which I live, Four Seasons, is one of them that is separated on two or three of the maps. And I would ask you to consider keeping neighborhoods and HOAs together, and that's all that I have to ask. Thank you for this work. I think it's remarkable where we're going. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Mr. Mayor, we have one last card, Dieter Crawford.
Good evening, Mr. Crawford.
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers, staff. My name is Dieter Crawford. I live in the Desert Island Gateway Estates neighborhood. And my preferred map, I submitted a map. It was similar to the Smoke Tree one. And the only thing that was pretty much different was I would like to see the Lawrence Crossley neighborhood included with the Desert Island and the San Rafael mobile home parks and Golden Sands as well. There's Veterans Track in the Demueve Park neighborhood. I think that would give minorities the best chance of being elected. I think that we have common interests as far as children, school-age children, income levels, education levels, housing concerns, and health conditions. So that's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Crawford. No other speakers, Mr. Mahia. Therefore, we will close the public comments portion. Unfinished business. A, provide direction regarding draft maps for voting district boundaries for a city council district-based electoral system pursuant to Election Code Section 10010. And do we want the subcommittee to make a report here? Okay.
Yes, I think it would be appropriate to ask the subcommittee to make a report, since you have reviewed the work, excuse me, the working group to make a report. It is getting late, isn't it? So if we could have the working group come up and report on your findings.
I'll give it a second, okay. Hi, my name's Kathy Wermick, and I'm one of the co-chairs of the working group. Members of the group include Oftabdata, Ed Dube, Grace Gardner, Dixie Miller, Stephen Moses, Alexis Ortega, and Tobias Wolf. Yep. I'll walk a little closer to the microphone. The ones, the members who are here tonight, if you'd stand up. We prepared this work. We worked together on our recommendations, and we filtered that through the principles that you gave us back in April, maximizing the goals of the CVRA, including civil rights, equality, and inclusion. And this really boils down to elimination or prevention of the dilution of minority voting blocks and the consideration of communities of interest. And the priority, to prioritize the creation of a minority, majority-minority district, and to the extent practical, keep organized neighborhoods intact. We worked primarily with the maximization of the goals and keeping the neighborhoods intact tonight. Those are the two filters that we used for this. The one filter we didn't use is where any of you lived. We kept that information completely out of our deliberations, and just wanted to let you know that.
Let's catch up in our slides. I'd like to walk you through the due diligence that we applied in eliminating maps in our process. There were four steps in this process. The, first of all, we only reviewed submitted maps, and our first step that we took was we eliminated maps that were not compliant with the hard criteria that were set under the law. So any map that was four districts was eliminated. Anything that was not balanced in population among the five districts, remember the 10% rule, anything that was not compact, these maps were all reviewed by the demographer for these criteria, and anything that was not contiguous. And there was one map, a single district map, that was eliminated because it was not contiguous, that attempted to connect the Golden Gates Mobile Home with the other communities of interest, but it was only a road that connected it, and that was not viewed as meeting the criteria. The next step that we did, as required by the Federal Voting Rights Act, is we confirmed legitimate communities of interest, and we are going to talk about this for each map. And that was done on all the maps that were submitted, because when we went from the 42 maps that were submitted under Step 1 and eliminated them, we received 19, and those 19 maps were reviewed. We then applied, as instructed, the review of the hard demographic data for dilution of the minority voting. This, we've talked about before. This is where total population, when you look at the hard demographic for total population, does become diluted when you move that to citizens of voting age population because of children, because of green card holders, the various things that we've already discussed. Then in our final step, we looked at the demographics that are consistent with the CVRA. This is the balance of majority to minority population, and the final maps that we arrived at as we, after we applied the dilution factor, we moved from 19, we arrived at 7. We found some of those could be combined because they were based on the same map without impacting the hard demographic data, and we arrive at four maps. Grace?
So, I want to talk a little bit more about communities of interest. There's a lot that goes on in this presentation. It's very dense, so we're going to give just a pretty quick overview of everything. If you do have questions later, we're happy to go through them. So just some of the communities of interest that we looked at. We looked at schools, community centers, organized neighborhoods, mobile home parks, golf courses, cultural identities, families with school-aged children, socioeconomic status, as well as existing districts such as the healthcare district, infrastructure, general plan data, airport noise. Those are also, just an example of some of the things we looked at. So we're going to move you forward. So the recommendations that we have tonight are for four different maps, the Agave map, the Smoke Tree map, the Prowl map, and the Crawford map. And these maps, the most important things is that they prevent minority voter dilution and that we've maintained communities of interest. So that's...
And may I just add here that the names that we are using correspond directly to the maps as they are listed on the public website. We tried to make very sure that we were consistent in the naming of the maps.
So the first map that we're going to show you is the Agave map, and what we've done here with those red circles is just made it very clear what the impacted neighborhood organizations are. Unfortunately, there are impacted neighborhoods in every map, and I think that was across the board regardless of whether it was our map that we chose or someone else's. And those in this area are the Gateway area near the airport, Ginatri, Little Tuscany, Movie Colony East, Sunrise Park, Upper West Side, and Whitewater Club. Now, the Agave map, I want to point out District 1 to you. District 1 goes along the northern part of the city and down into the Demuth Park area. This district is about the same in all of the maps that we're going to show you with just slight variations. The big similarities are that the socioeconomic status is similar. This is where the majority of our families live, including young children, and then they have a lot of similar environmental factors, you know, which includes sand, wind, and odors, whether it's from cannabis or something else. And then as far as Districts 2, 3, 4, 5, those districts are also relatively similar in all of our maps, demographically especially, but the other thing is that the infrastructure and terrain is what changes, as well as whether or not the map moves east to west or north to south. And I also want to point out that the southern part of the maps for all of these areas is more of our retired community. That's where you see the population being 65-plus.
And we do have to apply to each map the hard demographic data that was provided to us. What we would like to point out here, when you can see the dilution factor as it applies from the total population to the citizens' voting age population in Zone 1, does get us to a 50% playing field. Also, the demographics that apply to such things as the language spoken at home, the children that are in households, the percentage of the population that is employed, as we move across, there is a distinct differentiation between District 1 as we move across to the other majority districts. And moves us to...
We're just going to swing past all of these communities of interest for now.
In the interest of time for you. Question?
Sorry. I would like you to go over each slide really quickly. I don't know if you've been given a time limit, but that would be really helpful for me. I don't know for the rest of the council, but you did a lot of work on this, and I would like to hear about it.
Sure. If you want to go back, so just to give a little explanation about these slides, you're going to see this slide again and again, which is why we're saying that, but for now we can make sure to leave it up. But they're basically the same, which is ours. But this is listing all of the communities of interest for that Northern District 1, which we talked about, to some of the things that I mentioned, and then the second slide goes through those other two, other districts.
The majority districts. The second map that we put forth for consideration, this is very interesting. This is what we were talking about when we... It's okay. Or are we going to the Agave map? Is what we've been asked to do? Let's move on to the second map. The second map are, is the Smoke Tree map, and actually, what we would like to point out here, this was a map that we were able to combine two maps that had been submitted in addition to the demographer's Smoke Tree map, that we easily were able to combine because they were based on the Smoke Tree map, and in applying the differentiation, the first map is the Hindbaugh modification, which is meant to keep Upper West Side neighborhood intact. That was an easy fix because it moved from District 2 to District 1, that neighborhood. It did not impact the balance between the districts beyond 10%. The other map that was considered in this is the Miller 1 map, which incorporates the Lawrence Crossley neighborhood. That is allowed, that we have put forward because if that neighborhood does not impact the total population, again, the map remains balanced, and that is a neighborhood that we do have the map if you want to consider that differently, but we thought, since you have tasked us with giving you five maps, this helps to limit us to the number that is there. What we do. These are the demographics that are applied to the Smoke Tree map.
So what we see again is that the language spoken at home that is not English is more predominant in District 1. We again see Districts 4 and 5 is the majority of our residents who are 60 or older, and then we have a lot of working-age folks who are in Districts 1 and 2. That's the majority of our working sector.
And we'd like to point out, there's a lot of numbers that we're going through here tonight. We realize that we will be doing additional meetings with the public and to discuss all these dimensions. We have a tendency to glaze over when there's too many numbers presented, but we'd like to let everyone know that we will have more time to actually discuss these numbers in depth.
So, again, we have the same slides with the communities of interest, and then for Districts 2, 3, 4, 5. Oops. Our next map is the Prowl map. Now, this, this map separates the downtown, and it also separates the southern part of Palm Springs. So you noticed in some of the other maps, the southern region was kind of one district, and this one divides it a little bit, and then divides the downtown area. Again, there are some impacted neighborhoods. We have the Canyon Corridor, Gateway area near the airport, Ginatri, and the Upper West Side. The demographics, again, are largely the same as we've discussed, with District 1, again, being the majority of our families, languages spoken at home other than English, and the working age, again, in 1 and 2, and the retired community in 4 and 5.
Plus, in the Prowl map, the District 2, 3, and 4 do all share the downtown business district, and if you look at the data that is applied, those districts are, do not change that much the general demographic that is applied. All right. We're moving to the final map. All right. And the last map that we submit for you tonight is the Crawford map, number 1. This map was actually based off of the Doobie map 1. Dieter had come up and talked about Smoke Tree. You will see with the majority districts, it matches the Doobie map 5. We, in looking at this...
Sure. Those are the two maps that I'm looking at, and that was my main question. Those two maps are identical, aren't they? I'm talking about Doobie 5 and Crawford 1.
They are not identical. There are some minor differences between the maps. The most important one is the Crawford map combines the, we don't have really a pointer, but if you look in the upper northeast corner of, you will see that the Whitewater community that surrounds the Golden Sands Mobile Home Park is included in District 1. In the Doobie map 5, we had been working with the map tool that we were attempting to contain the specific neighborhoods, and that map tool, because of the census blocks, does take neighborhoods and split them, which we are not able to control. That would have to be done by the demographer.
So in the Crawford map, you're saying that's solved, that's split?
What I am saying is, in the Crawford map, there is a shift to the neighborhood for Whitewater, and that is done by, of course, to keep within total population boundary by shifting the Almirador. The Doobie map 5 is available and marked up if you would like to see that as well, since that was submitted by me.
Well, I'm looking at, that's what I'm looking at. I'm comparing Doobie 5 and Crawford 1.
Yeah, so you'll see in the Crawford 1 map, there's the Golden Sands neighborhood is included at the top, and the other thing is a slight change at the top with the Sun Racquet Club area. So that's where you want to focus your attention if you're looking at them side by side.
Okay. Thank you so much. Didn't want to sidereel you, but this has been driving me crazy because they seem almost identical.
Right. It's just at that top area.
Well, there is also a slight change, though, between District 2 and 3 with the Almirador neighborhood in order for him to be able to keep the total populations within the 10% rule that we have.
Yeah, and again, that's also just a slight movement.
Yeah, they're very slight, those differences. Okay. Thank you.
All right. So where are we here? And these are the demographics that match that map.
I want to...
Go through them?
Just, again, you know, these numbers are largely similar for each of them, and you'll see, again, language spoken at home, the age, it's pretty consistent across all of these maps.
One of the things we would like to point out is one of the communities of interest that we looked at for the first district, District 1, is the shared boundaries that are along our eastern border. And in doing so, we went and looked at the Cat City map that was done, the Cathedral City final map that has already been approved and released. And we wanted to put this up because we want to show you certain similarities that apply to our process that has been done. You will see in this map that they also have five districts. District 1, District 4 are majority Latino districts. They are majority-minority districts that border Palm Springs. District 5 is a, also a majority-minority district with the combined minorities that are within Cat City. District 2 is an equal playing field district. So four out of the five districts meet the CVRA criteria for equal playing field or better for minorities. The third district is very interesting. You will notice that it looks very similar to our District 1. That is their minority district, but in this case, the minority district is the majority population of non-Hispanic whites, and they have applied, that's what we wanted to show you, that Cat City does resemble us, but there is a twist in terms of what is the majority population and what is the minority population.
So, that's, that's all we've, all we've got for you for now. If you have any questions about future planning, this is the app for it.
Have this map available.
And Kathy can talk to you more about that, but if you have specific questions, we're happy to answer them. Again, like I said, there's just a lot of information here, and we felt like it might be a better use of our time and your time and the community's time if you asked specific questions rather than us slogging through and making this an hour-long presentation. I do want to remind everyone in this room that on Tuesday, October 23, at 6:30 PM, we will have our first community meeting on the maps, where residents can come in and give their, give their opinions again, and we can talk in all the detail they want about them, and that's going to be at the Demuth Park Community Center.
And thank you very much. That concludes our presentation for this evening. We hand over the dice back to the mayor.
Thank you. The work that the working group has done has just been incredible, and we are absolutely in your debt. From a process standpoint, the subcommittee's recommendation is that we don't spend a great amount of time tonight trying to fine-tune any of these maps. Frankly, I don't think we need to do much of any in terms of fine-tuning maps. This is the evening to narrow down the 3, 4, 5 maps that we think are the best maps to then be able to, over the next month with community input, be able to make the fine-tuning. Gee, I think this neighborhood can be held together if we move the boundary lines a few blocks to the north or a few blocks to the east, or I would like to see us whole, separate these two neighborhoods because they don't actually have much in the way of community of interest. This is the, this is the big cut, and then a month from now, when we are back together is when we're going to have to narrow down to one or two maps and really begin that process of fine-tuning. I can just tell you from a personal standpoint, having looked at these maps over and over again, I haven't found one that I am 100% in love with. I have found many that I like a lot, and I think it's, tonight should be about which are the maps that are worth investing the time to get down and really start to fine-tune.
Thank you, and thank you to the working group. I know this was yet another big chunk of work, and really appreciate it, and of course, having all the demographic data, and we do have our demographer here as well, so the council knows that if there are questions. And my understanding is, tonight, we're just picking the maps, we're not doing any tweaking of them, right?
I just want to clarify that the recommendation of the working group is to take Smoke Tree and to merge Hindbaugh map and Miller map, and so that's the only modification, and so it'd be a modified Smoke Tree map when it's done.
Okay. And so one of the things, as we look at these tonight, and just for the council, is to put out maps, because I think the community, although we got a lot of people weighing in on communities of interest and coming to the meetings, and I think you selected maps based on that... based on that, uh, is to really think about having some maps that provide some different options. Because the next month, there are all these new community meetings where we can get that input. Um, when people actually see the maps, instead of thinking it in this broad sense, I want to be connected with this community because of the park or whatever it may be, seeing the maps, I think will get much more in-depth input from people. Um, and the one thing, and I just want to ask in looking at all the maps, is, you know, the one community of interest that, um, didn't come up as much in the community meetings, but, uh, Councilmember Middleton and I heard, and I heard a lot as liaison to a lot of the business organizations, um, and we heard tonight was about whether or not downtown should have multiple people, three or four. And I think some of these maps get to three. I see ways actually to get some of the maps to four, but I just want to know how much you weighed that in these and if there are some maps that you think do better on that, even if they may not do other things that you may like or we may like.
The downtown merchants, and they weren't as concerned about, uh, making sure that the business district was broken up or in a specific district. Most of those merchants told us that they lived in Palm Springs and they would probably also relate to the, the districts based on where they lived. Uh, but we did try and present maps that at least showed the business district coming into a couple of different, um, configurations. The Prowl map did that specifically. And I don't know if you have other maps.
Yeah, there are a couple others. So the ones you recommended, I think Prowl did three.
Yeah, Prowl, Prowl did the most and was in, it was a different and very, we thought very interesting map, unique, that deserved to be in the mix.
Yeah, and I, I just want to highlight that because it has come up in some of the meetings we've been at. And there's mixed feelings on it, right? So, but I want to make sure we, something we put forward shows that so we can get the input on it.
Yes, it is in what we put forward. As I pointed out, we did review the 19 maps for communities of interest. Of, in those maps that did not meet the dilution factor, there, we saw this. So we made sure that we applied the due diligence to keep those communities of interest in mind when we were looking at other maps for consideration.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Holstage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also had those concerns and, and thinking about downtown and how many council members we want representing the downtown. And some of my questions were about the Doobie maps. So if, if you don't mind, could you just, uh, come up and explain, um, because you did a wide variety of maps and I was trying to compare each one, but I didn't get a full briefing from you about what were you, you were thinking? Because I actually think that those Doobie maps, um, did a better job than other maps that the Working Group didn't recommend in splitting our Palm Canyon 111 into, and splitting those business districts into having four council members or more that are connected to our business corridors. Could you talk briefly about, sorry to put you on the spot?
No, no, no problem at all. No, I, I know my maps by heart, so, okay.
I thought you might be an expert.
I am. In the set of Doobie maps that was applied, my first map that I really, uh, put forward was based on the principle of Occam's razor, okay? And I don't know whether you know what Occam's razor is, but it's a principle and science that the most elegant solution is the simplest solution. So I took an eagle eye view. I looked at what is important to all communities in Palm Springs. And it appeared to me that that was water. It's in our name. And if you look at the map and you look at where the wash is go, how our water flows, and move back and apply that, it was very interesting. The demographics that flowed, and this is in terms of total population, naturally flowed to provide majority-minority districts and total population and broke down into what we looked at. And those, those washes, basically that set up the, those first maps, gave stewardship for each district over part of the washes that we have. So those communities of interest were the same applied across the districts. However, when we apply the dilution factor, none of those maps qualified to create a true equal playing field district. And that's why those did not move forward. The same is true as well with, uh, for instance, David Freeman's maps.
Thank you. And I agree, it would have been nice if we could have maps that we could put over each other in some way to compare, because I was also, I'm not a expert at looking at maps and it's not really the way my brain processes information. Um, I like, but I, I agree that choosing some, um, maps that are very different is helpful in this process, so then we can get more community feedback about what values are important and what communities of interest are really important to our residents. Um, so I was, I actually had flagged a few of your maps. So do you, because I liked having at least one map that had four people on the business corridor, um, four districts. So do you have recommendations about your favorite maps in those and, and some thoughts about one, 1A, 1B, to five?
Um, out of the, out of the maps I put forth, and please let me reiterate, the dilution factor that was applied is the citizens of voting age, which I wrote a letter to the Desert Sun to try to clarify why this was applied to my maps and they didn't move forward. My favorite map, I think, out of those maps, uh, is Doobie 4A, I do believe. I'm, I'm sorry, 1A. I mean, 1D. I'm, this is very, like, it's in terms of our...
Thank you for doing all these maps.
1D is in boy.
Right. And, and some of these maps were done so we could have a dialogue when we were going out and talking with the public on trade-offs that would be in maps. And also to give you the ability to talk about those kinds of trade-offs, just in moving a single district, for example. If you look, the differentiation between map 1A, B, C, and D just moves, uh, Little Beverly Hills between maps. It moves the, the, uh, district that includes the Parkview Mobile Homes at the curve, because the curve of the southern district is part of the change in the healthcare districts that we look at. The southern part of the districts of Palm Springs fall into Health District E, and that goes all the way up to Takwitz River Estates, whereas in northern district in our District One, our healthcare District C. And we also have one community of interest that is all the way to the, uh, east side, which is the Cathedral Canyon Country Club, which is very interesting. That's in the D district, which matches Cathedral City. And you have to go through Cathedral City to reach that district if you don't have the key to the lock to get through the, the gates. So I, I remain at your disposal.
Sorry, I have a lot of questions about your maps. What about map two and map five? Do you have comments on those? That's page 28 and 30 in the packet for the public.
Map two and map five were done so that they show communities moving from east to west. That was meant to break up the downtown business district, um, and to give each district a purview moving from east to west across. It's just another way of looking at it. Um, and frankly, I was not as thrilled with that map as I was with the map, uh, 1D, because the 1D map actually gets us two communities that are majority-minority district, where they are in the majority. However, the dilution factor does not hold.
Thank you. That's all I'll grill you about for the maps. Thank you. I just have a few other questions for city staff or the Subcommittee or the Working Group. So we chose five as a, five maps as a goal. There's no requirement how many we choose, right? But that was the goal and the direction to the Working Group and just thinking about how we want to do this and if there are a number of maps that we like. And then how, how closely can we change the boundaries of those maps? Can we do serious revisions to the maps that we choose? Or legally, I want to make sure that we're clear about the process moving forward in case we have big revisions.
So I'm going to introduce Justin Levitt. He's, uh, the demographer from National Demographic Corporation, and I'm going to ask if he could respond to that.
Yeah. Um, so tonight, what we're hoping to do is to get a set of maps that we can take out to those public forums and begin to get feedback on. We do have the capacity to do major revisions, um, or changes to these maps. We would suggest that, you know, if we're going to have a series of public forums in the next few weeks, that we hear what the public has to say about these maps. And then at the next meeting, what we do is we crew, is we use that feedback to determine what those revisions should be, um, other than perhaps minor changes, um, to try to get maybe a neighborhood all together or not. Today, what we're trying to do is hopefully take these 19 maps and come up with a set of around five that work for your meetings over the next month.
Thank you. I just have one final question is, have we talked about how the roads work on the map? So I saw like 111 on a lot of maps was split. If it runs north-south, you know, where that line is and where it includes, like what businesses on each side it would include, things like that. So when are we going to get the really, these are large, really zoomed out maps, so when are we going to get really the nitty-gritty of the roads and the lines?
Thank you for that question, because I wanted to mention, we have all of these maps available on an online web viewer on the website, where you can search for addresses, zoom in and zoom out. For the public forums, we will most likely work with the city to create much larger versions, poster board sized versions, that the city can print, um, as PDFs. Not, not to make public to everyone as a packet, because nobody wants to take five-foot by four-foot posters home with them, but to have available for people to see that street-level detail, where those neighborhood boundaries are. Um, and we'll work with the city on getting those maps. I know you mentioned the overlays, you like to overlay two maps. The web viewer that we have allows you to do that. And I would really encourage any member of the public who's interested to go online to our website to check that out.
Thank you. And I wonder if we could have computers available for some of these meetings so that, i- it's really hard personally for me to look at a big blown-up map. Um, so if we had laptops or something available where people could actually zoom in and look street by street, I think that would be really helpful. I have no other questions right now. I'll let others ask questions and then I'll comment later.
Mayor Proton Roberts?
So, um, thank you for letting us know about the web viewer and the overlay, because I think the overlay is an important tool. In, in, in my shakeout, in my own head on these maps, the maps that I'm coming to are extremely similar. And, um, specifically too, that I, that I, I'm finding work the best. So the web viewer will be helpful for our audience, um, at home and those who would be watching. What is the website for the web viewer?
It's psdistricts.com. And there's four pages that make up that, and we have it in English and Spanish. And then if you go to the page that is, uh, view submitted maps, uh, you'll be able to go to the interactive viewer as well as download the PDFs.
If that's possible to put on the screen tonight and keep it on the screen tonight, that would be great for those who are just tuning in and paying attention to this. Uh, you know, I, I, what I'm finding in the community is now that we're down, getting down to brass tacks or maps, uh, people are paying attention. And, um, now would be the time to pay attention. So, thank you very much. I want to say that I'm, find that I'm zeroing in on, um, two maps in particular, and that, and they were two maps that I mentioned earlier. In fact, Ed, Ed, do you mind coming up?
There's too many voices talking at the same time.
And, and maybe Crawford is, uh, uh...
Dieter.
Uh, or Dieter, if you'd come up as well, just because the two maps that I find the most compelling are, are the Crawford map and the Doobie map five. And again, to me, they're almost identical. And I realize that we'll get into the weeds later on the fine-tuning of these, but I'm impressed, um, with this map, because I think it accomplishes a tremendous amount. I think, uh, the things that I like the most about it, I very much like the downtown divided into at least four districts. I think that's a great idea. I think that the downtown will benefit and the merchants will benefit by not all being in one district. And I think that, and I very much, Dieter, like your point about combining minority districts because of shared interests and, um, because of the, of the, the family, um, component in that. And that makes a lot of sense to me. And in those two maps, you, you guys accomplished that. And I, and I'm very impressed with that. I, I think that there's a, um, a good argument for combining, um, the Desert Highland and the Crosley into one district. And, um, just for the reasons that you stated earlier, Dieter, that it will make it easier for someone to get elected there, and I think so too. I, I think you make a good point with that. So, um, again, I guess I don't, you, you, Ed, you helped me a little while ago trying to break down the minor differences on those maps, but I guess it doesn't matter. Those two issues to me, I like very much. How much they divide up, um, neighborhoods, I haven't really, um, zeroed in on yet. That's hard for me to see in these maps. Maybe you can tell me how many neighborhood, how many neighborhoods are divided in, in this map or, Dieter, either one of you?
In my map?
Yeah, in Doobie Five. I see Doobie Five and Crawford One is, um, virtually the same map, other than minor changes.
I'll point out the small changes. Uh, if you look on Doobie Five, the Racquet Club, uh, neighborhood there, the Racquet Club Estates neighborhood, uh, on my map, it follows San Rafael down, and it doesn't include, uh, the Racquet Club Estates.
I see that now.
And then I pulled out the, uh, Mobile Home Park of Golden Sands, which is a couple hundred Hispanic residents. So that's what I was trying to achieve with that. If you look on Doobie's, his is blue there in the Four Seasons and the Golden Sands area.
I see, that pulls it back in. Okay. So, so guys, how many, are, how many, how many neighborhoods are divided in this, in these two maps? Can you tell me? Or, or do I know? Is it somewhere that I'm not seeing already?
It's in the presentation.
Under Crawford? Okay. What page is that? Oh, okay.
It's on, it's on the map and on the side. It lists what...
It says impacted neighborhood organizations on the side of each map. And on, on the, uh, the Crawford map, it's Almirador, Gateway, Gene Autry, Lawrence Crosley, Upper West Side and Whitewater Club. Some of those impacted neighborhoods are impacted on no matter what map we submitted because of the mapping tool.
Right, no, I, I can see what they include. What I was trying to figure out is which, which neighborhoods got divided, because that's, I think, well, I've heard, I've heard many comments about most don't want to see neighborhoods cut in half, and I get that.
Right.
So that's, you know, very much liking what, uh, two, the two of you came up with. That's my only concern with it.
The, here again, my, the map that I did, the original Doobie Five map, was an adjustment, a, a alternative offer to the Smoke Tree map that still applied the washes that I talked about that I held throughout most of my maps. So you will see the main difference to this one is, in my map from the other maps that I did, is Doobie Four, where you get the wash, I'm, the, sorry, District Four, not Doobie Four, where you have the Takwitz Creek flowing from the source through, down through the, the wash into, uh, until it reaches where Takwitz Creek joins the Palm Canyon wash. That's one of the differences that we, I thought that should be put forward to discuss. There also is a shift in the Almirador neighborhood. That does get divided in moving to Dieter's map in order to balance the total population between the maps. If you feel that you would like that considered by the public, you can pull the Doobie map five map forward for consideration. That is a true difference. Since I submitted the map and my intent in that map, I felt that Dieter's map was closer to my intent as well, so I was very happy. We worked on the map together. This was the last, uh, session that we had up in, at Highland Desert, at the James O. Jesse Center, specifically to work with the mapping tool, with the voices in that neighborhood.
So, yeah. So yeah, I, again, I, I know we want to avoid getting into the weeds on those minor tweaks. I know we'll do that later. I had one more question. Oh, well, and again, I just want to state that the reason I prefer Doobie five and Crawford one over Smoke Tree is Smoke Tree creates a mega wealth district and a major commercial district unto itself. And I really like that Doobie five and Crawford one divide downtown and they divide our wealthiest communities into other districts. And I think that is a better balance than, than Smoke Tree. So I'm sure I'll have more questions. I'm learning a lot as my colleagues ask questions. And again, you know, I, I know we can't compliment you all enough, but it's because you deserve it. You did all the hard work for us. When I, you know, as, as, as Councilman Holstich said, you know, it's, it's, it's difficult to understand these maps at this size, but the amount of work that you put into this is just staggering. And I, I think we can't make that point enough that we couldn't have done this without you and the, the, the mega intelligence that you all brought to this. So thank you.
Councilman McCorris?
One really quick point, which is some of the impact, some of the neighborhoods that are divided could easily be undivided with the demographer's tools. We, but we didn't make tweaks to the maps and we left that up to you working or somebody working with the demographer later. But it's not necess, it won't, not every neighborhood that has a division like Gene Autry, I think, would be an easy tweak to put that back together. But those, those are things that we'd have to work with the demographer on.
And one of the promises that we've made to One PS is that the city clerk and I, on any neighborhood that's divided on any map, will sit down specifically with the people in that neighborhood and talk through. A lot of these are going to be relatively easy to fix. Others may be a little more difficult. I don't want to say that we can get to 45 neighborhoods that are 100% unified, but I've, I've looked at these maps. Anthony and I have spent a lot of time looking where there's neighborhood divisions and much of this can be dealt with. Yeah, when we get to the weeds.
And if, I can just add, we were tasked to only work with the maps that had been submitted. Anything that would tweak that beyond, beyond the maps that were submitted, we leave to your discretion because that was not part of the integrity of the process that we applied. So that is left to the council.
So interesting that you said that, but the, the Doobie maps are obviously maps that you submitted, right? So when you were tweaking, you were tweaking your own maps. Okay.
That's right.
I just wanted to make sure that there,
That's correct.
That you all got the same opportunity in your own map creation as, as the rest of the community did. Okay, terrific.
Councilman McCorris?
Thank you, Mayor. And, you know, I tend to agree with Mayor Protem Roberts on Dieter Crawford's map, which just, you know, does get more people touching on downtown. I think we definitely want some maps that do that in the process so we really get to hear from our business community when they can really see what it means. The other map, which is another one they recommended, which does that very well and gives actually bigger chunks of downtown, I think, is the Pro map, which also equally has three districts downtown and impacts the least number of neighborhoods of the maps that are recommended and some of the neighborhoods that are the easiest fixes. So I agree with that recommendation moving forward, but I just wanted, for the rest of council, because Councilmember Middleton and I have spent more time on this. I think Mr. Prell's map really does a good job of, of that and giving three people parts of downtown. It looks, you know, it just, it looks like logical in a lot of ways. I've looked at the communities of interest that seem to make sense. So I'm glad that one, you know, it's one that I'd like to see move forward as well because I do think it, you know, it sort of, it doesn't put, a lot of them put Movie Colony and Las Palmas and Little Tuscan together. This splits that up a little bit, and there's good and bad with both. So I think having that go forward and for discussion is what's important. So, you know, I think the four map, the combined value, four or five maps you put forward all seem to give a good variety of options instead of putting two that are almost identical. And so I appreciate, I appreciate that thought.
It sort of sounds like we've, I know the ones, I've, I picked out six that I thought looked the best, and so far the six, two are the ones that the subcommittee recommended and two others are ones that people, the council members have mentioned. So I think we may be fairly close to consensus on a top five. Should we see?
Which are the ones you'd like?
Maybe we should see where we are on the which ones we have in common.
I'm writing down the two that have mentioned it. So if you want to go ahead and add yours and then we can compare where we are in preferences, I think that's a good idea.
Okay. And Anthony, you keeping track of this too? Because I, I, my original ones I'd picked out were the Crawford and Agave, which I thought worked very well. And I really liked the Doobie map two, which you mentioned, Councilmember Holstich, because I like the way it runs east-west, keeps the different neighborhoods, which have similar personalities together. And it also, everybody touches downtown, which I think is good, but it might have to be tweaked a little bit for demographics. And the Prell map, I think, is good and the Doobie five. So the, those five, I sort of, I didn't get as far down into the very demographic details as Ed did. But I think if we could all sort of come to consensus of five, then once we get to those five, we can then come back and we can really dig into those and do what Councilmember Holstich said and look at them on top of each other. We can do like what Councilmember Middleton said, and we could look at the neighborhood, the Norgs and tweak those. And we can take five and really work on them, but obviously this is too many to, to do that with. Are we on, are we getting close to consensus on five?
I think so. So just to go over mine and I also liked a lot of them and, and a lot of them were similar. I also had polled the Crawford map and I had also polled the, or preferred the Prell map. And I think it's, this is really helpful because thank you to our demographer for doing the work and having those maps. And then we have people like Dieter Crawford who've, you know, families, you've lived here for decades and decades, your family, and really drilling down on those specific neighborhoods, which is just really, really helpful. And thank you to our residents who worked on submitting maps. I didn't submit a map. We have to decide the maps, but I really appreciate, it's a lot of work to make these maps and do that, and that's a big commitment. So thank you for doing that because it really helps us. We want your expertise. So I had also polled Crawford and Prell. I had flagged Smoke Tree as a discussion item, and if we want to include that in our choice right now, I agree, I don't like to see one district represent nearly all of downtown and to create like a super district where it might have a lot of influence and thinking about the influence that council members could wield in their districts. I have concerns about that, but I noticed that a lot of, of the maps had designed themselves around Smoke Tree. And maybe it's that Crawford or one of the other ones is similar enough that we don't need Smoke Tree in the list. Make sure I get each one. I found a lot of the Do, Doobie ones interesting. I think I would also poll Doobie two. Yeah. I, I hear that the working group, that there might need to be some demographic work there, but these are the maps that we have, and I'd like to have one that goes east to west with every district touching our business corridor. Those are mine. Thank you.
Does Doobie two have every district touching sort of?
No, it doesn't have the, it has, all of the districts are running east to west. So that's page 28 for those following along. So the District One, which is the most northern part of the city, that's on 111, but that's not really the business district yet. There are a lot of other businesses in that area, so it does touch industry there. But I think it does the best, in my opinion, of making sure each district is, is touching the business corridor.
Okay.
Out of all the other maps. And I looked at that carefully, especially, and I'm not considering where I live in any way in this process, but just thinking about, I live in Sonora Sunrise and thinking about if a district gets landlocked away from any businesses or any business corridors, I think that's a problem for that district and the ability to, to serve and to run. So I want to think about that. So I thought Doobie map two did that the best.
Also, if I could comment and add to what Councilmember Holstich said, one and five also touch, you know, the core, the Camp Palm Canyon, and those are the areas where we see a lot of businesses coming in. So if we're thinking about, if we're looking at today, but if we look over the next five to 10 years, I think we're going to see those two areas growing, growing extensively.
I agree.
Well, I guess it's my turn. So I do think Smoke Tree should be one of the maps that we consider as a finalist, and that's the Smoke Tree Modified map that combines the recommendations of Mr. Heimbach and Ms. Miller. I, though, share the concerns that my colleagues have regarding downtown and the need to make some adjustments there. And as I've looked at that map, I think we can do some things with a couple of neighborhoods around downtown that would make that a, potentially a very viable map. And so much of what we've, Smoke Tree.
Revised, but.
As a finalist. The Agave map is a very interesting map and does a lot of good things. And like all of you, I was very impressed with the Prell and the Crawford maps. And Ed Doobie did an unbelievable amount of work. And when I see the Crawford map, I'm seeing both the handiwork of Mr. Crawford and the handiwork of Mr. Doobie, and it's, it's a pretty neat combination.
So is that?
Well, my, my notes were the Crawford map, which is very similar to Doobie five, right? And you've worked on both. So the Crawford map, the Agave map, the Prell map, the Doobie two map, and the Smoke Tree Modified map. The list I have. Am I missing anything?
That's the list I have.
So what are we all in agreement on? Crawford?
Well, I'm saying those five to move forward based on, that would cover everything, everyone on council on it, pretty much, I think. Crawford, Agave, Prell, Doobie two, and Smoke Tree Modified.
And why did we like Doobie two over Doobie five?
Both the mayor and Councilmember Holstich mentioned they liked that it went east-west and everyone touched on, I think, 111 at some point.
Okay.
And Doobie five is pretty much Crawford.
And Doobie five is really,
Yeah, they worked on it together and I like the, I like the changes that were done to it.
I'm okay with that because they're, they're all covered. And again, tweaking, they're going to get closer and closer. Okay.
That's five.
Did we pick five?
Yeah. We started five and six and we, later we said, let's not go to six. So I think we do five, the community can give us input and then,
Anthony, looks like he's in shock.
Next meeting, it's one or two.
Did we actually, did we actually get to this quickly?
Did we actually agree on something?
We did.
I think, I think Dr. Reddy went into a coma. He, he's never seen us work that quickly before.
Just to make sure we've got everything correct, could you read back to us what you've got as the five?
Crawford, Agave, Smoke Tree Modified, Doobie two, Prell.
Yeah, sounds good.
You don't need a motion, right? It's direction or do you need? Direction's fine. Okay.
So should we announce all of the upcoming community meetings? I don't know if staff wants to do that or the working group, since we have people here who are interested in this topic and we can tell them the next ways to get involved in the process going forward.
And I'm also hoping that the press will include the website so that people can do their own overlays. That would be greatly appreciated.
If you want.
Thank you so much.
Just in case. So the upcoming community engagement forums are Tuesday, October 23rd at 6:30, Demuth Park Community Center. Monday, October 29th at 6:30 at the Richard Center at the high school. Monday, November 5th at 6:30 at the Unity Center, James O. Jesse Desert Highland Unity Center. And then we also have a special one, a Biya Nihan, Community Outreach, which is a public gathering for Filipino-American communities and communities of color and their allies. And that's going to be on October 27th at 6:30 at the Demuth Park Community Center.
Anything else? Are we finished? Anyone have any other final comments? Okay. Can we adjourn?
One quick thing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you're part of an organization and anyone who's listening to this, and we should put it out on the website and press releases, who wants people to bring the maps so you can look at them, I know Councilmember Middleton and I are meeting with the Hospitality Association. There are a number of, you know, organizations. We will find someone to come present, whether from the working group or staff or the council, to just to get your input. So please reach out to anyone on council or the city clerk if you want that kind of presentation. That's all. Thank you.
Last thing, could we ask the city attorney, city clerk to just identify again what we need to be doing on November 15, November 29, and our meetings in December so that we all have a sense going forward, what it is that will happen at these upcoming meetings?
On November 15th, it's going to be critically important that you all make determination on one or two final maps and then make any major modifications that you're going to make. Those maps will then be public before the next meeting and in which case you could make smaller modifications, fine tuning, on, on November 29th. But the reason we need those to be small is because we have a very quick turnaround time, which is December 5th, in which you need to adopt that map and we need to make that, the, the final map available to the public for five days.
So the public has about a month until November 15th to tell us which of these top maps they want and give all that input so we decide that, that time because.
And we should be clear that on December 5th, we will be asking you to introduce the ordinance through which the districting will take place. And on December 19th, we'll be asking you to adopt that ordinance.
I thought we had moved that up. That what we decided on?
We, we expressed, well, maybe we can, but.
I think, I think we've left it open to move it up if we can, so we don't wait to the last minute.
But given that we don't meet again until November 15 and the community now has to go through five separate maps and try to identify what they, which one they like and what they want to modify on the ones they like, there's still a lot of work to be done.
Anything else? Okay, seeing nothing else. Dr. Reddy, anything? Mr. Cocken, city clerk? Okay. We will, city clerk, city council will adjourn to the next regular meeting Wednesday, November 14th, 2018, at 6 o'clock. Council chamber, Palm Springs City Hall, preceded by closed session. Thank you.